Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming. This is going to be a short meeting. So we're calling to order at 6:02. Additions, deletions to the agenda.
Want to delete the financials?
So, yeah, we had added financials to this, but we're gonna wait on that for the next meeting. We have some information, but not all the information. So to really hammer this out, we're gonna wait till we have everything. Anybody else? All right, hearing none. Correspondence, my correspondence with some financial information, but again, that's gonna wait. Anybody else for correspondence? No. Members of the public? Anybody? Peter, do you see everybody that's here? Do you need any names or?
How would I know?
Yeah. Well, you've been here a lot.
I see you and Mickey, that's it, and Bill.
And Lori's here, and Bridget Corby's here. Yep. And Mark Coolbeth is here.
Oh, Lori's there.
Yep.
Lori's here.
Bridget Corby and who?
Uh, Mark Coolbeth.
How do you spell that, please?
Coolbeth, C-O-O-L-B-E-T-H. Coolbeth.
How convenient.
I like that name. Thank you for coming. All right, anybody from members of the public? I see Crystal's here. If not, we'll move on to old businesses, which is why we're here, for food service planning. And I'm gonna just toss that over to Lori.
Okay. So, I don't know when it was, but it was last week sometime. I sent a fairly large packet of information to you based on my conversation with Rosie Kruger, who is the director of the Child Nutrition Program at the state level. Basically, I know that there was a lot of questions about, could we push this off? The answer's no. Another, actually memo that came out, which is included in your packet here from the Secretary of Education, says the same thing, basically. It also gives a lot more detail. So feel free to read that at your leisure. So there needs to be a decision made as to a food program for Wyndham School for the upcoming school year. I laid out a couple of different options, Wyndham running their own program. I did include, you know, what that would take to do that. It would take hiring somebody immediately to be onboarded, and they would need to have, you know, basically the experience behind running a food program to do that. That would be a pretty costly option. I did include a job description in the documents that I sent just to give you some idea of what a food service program manager does do. It would give you the most control, but it would also be very costly and expensive to do that. You have no economy to scale when you do that, the high labor cost to the meals served, and we need to get moving on that as soon as possible. The other item is a, or option is a, it's a bid process for boxed meals. So there are a couple of different ways that you can bid out the food program. You could put it out to bid for a food service company, such as like the Abbey Group, or I think Cafe Services does Brattleboro. We're a little late in the game for that. We can't get a bid out to do that at this point and get it back. The bid process for that is very comprehensive to do that type of bid. The other thing Rosie suggested, maybe you could put out a boxed meal bid, where somebody, you had mentioned the West Towns and Country Store, or, I'm not sure the name of it, but that, you know, they could do a boxed meal. However, they would have to comply with all of the regulations, the food, the meal patterns and everything as well. So, and they would be held responsible for that as part of the contract. So, again, an option.
And we'd have to pay them to make meals every day.
Yep. Yep. Anyway you do it, you have to pay for the meals to do this. You can purchase meals from an existing program, and we have West River down the road here that does do this and has done this for other school districts as well. BRSU might be a potential to look at doing it. I have not reached out to them. Again, we're sort of running up a time, you know, with a time crunch here. Regardless of what way you do, you need some amount of in-house, somebody that can count meals, that can do that kind of thing. So, you know, I was thinking that that would go to the administrative assistants role to be trained in how to count meals and how to, you know, make sure the meal pattern looks right and that type of thing. So, either option, you would need to have somebody in Wyndham School trained to do this. So that's the basic overview of the options that you have and the non-options that you don't have. And I'm just gonna come out and say, I recommend to the board that they seriously consider the West River program. It's probably your least amount of risk as far as hiring somebody to do your own program. You can tag on for a year, see what happens, see where this whole thing goes with the, whether the legislature votes it in permanently. You know, it's just, I think it's a lot less risk for everyone, buddy involved. So a couple of different ways that Wyndham Central can support, either option that you decide is, we can do all of the applications. So all the parents in the schools would be sent a free and reduced meal application at the beginning of the school year. Those would need to be filled out and returned. You would be set up for what's called Provision Two. So this would count as your first year of Provision Two. And we can, I can go down that path explaining that at some point. I can do it now if you want. But it's, it's basically setting up a system where all students eat for free forever. Right now, the state is picking up the tab. In West River, they are Provision Two, and the taxpayers pick up the tab for whatever isn't covered by federal and some state funding. So everybody, and according to Dr. French's memo today, that all schools are either going to be classified as community eligibility or Provision Two. Community eligibility, I don't believe Wyndham would qualify for. It, basically, you have to have 40% of your students on Dr. Dinosaur. So, and that comes from the state. That has nothing to do with the applications. It has nothing to do with what the parents fill out. That's something we get a list from the state.
Lori, I'm sorry, when you say Provision Two, you're talking about Option Two?
No, I'm talking about, it's a classification of the food service. And it's in the memorandum here from Dan French, the secretary of it.
And Dan French thought that it would be a good idea to put this out in July? Or whenever it started? We didn't hear about it till June. So regardless, it's just after we've developed our budget, I don't see, so what's the cost we're looking at for the one that you're recommending?
So, I haven't done all the cost analysis on this, but basically what it entails is that, you know, you would pay for the training and probably some additional hours for the administrative assistant to be able to do the counting and take the orders, probably go pick up the meals, that type of thing. So it would be, you know, as far as that, a little bit more time in the contract for your administrative assistant. The other issue is that West River's going to charge you per meal. So again, the more participation, the cheaper the cost. And we have a new, I think Greg, is Greg on yet? Not on yet, okay. We have a new food service manager for West River, and I, he just started like yesterday, or whatever, today. So I haven't had a chance to meet with him to talk about costing out the per meal price. But that's what you would pay, is you would pay a per meal price. Again, participation makes it, you know, more affordable if they're doing 19 meals versus two meals. That type of thing. So, so I don't have a fixed price for you, but it's, you know, gonna cost you some labor. That's definitely, it's gonna cost you some transportation. I had talked to Mickey about, you know, what Wyndham Central could do to help out with this. And one of them is the application process. So Donna, our Child Nutrition Coordinator at the central office, would take care of getting all those applications out and then reviewed, which you have to go through training to review the applications. So that could be taken care of. And then the other piece is, you know, Sarah did all of the POs and the invoices and the purchasing. We've hired somebody that's going to be sent, doing a pilot program with West River for centralized purchasing and doing all those POs. So instead of training your administrative assistant to do that, they could spend the time training to do the food program, and that all could be done by the central office as well. So that would keep your costs down. And we pilot this program in Wyndham as well. I talked to Mickey about that a little bit. The upside, two upsides, actually, to doing this is running, by running a program, all your students would eat for free for the year. And they would potentially be eligible for each family that participates for $400 next summer in EBT cards. So that's like a little perk of being, having a food program. And there is also fundraising can be done to offset some of these costs, the additional costs of what the program might cost. And I see Greg had joined us, and I just, he told me about a conversation he had with the new food service manager today. So I thought maybe we could hear from him a little bit, if that's okay, Beth?
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Hey Lori.
Hey.
Yeah, so I spoke to Jacob Gallagley, who's the new food service director at West River. We just, we discussed just the backend paperwork that needs to take place to have a system, you know, to have a food service program. And he really was like, yeah, you, they'll want to run that through us. Yes, I think we can do it down here. I think we can do a good job. He was really positive about it and felt like he could, you know, really, really provide, you know, as good of a school lunch as we can provide to you all up there. I did tell him that the logistics of transportation was, you know, the main thing left to figure out. We actually have our first meeting tomorrow, and I was thinking that I would probably ride with him and check out all the different schools. So I was thinking that we'll probably stop up there tomorrow so that we can see the space you have up there and see, you know, what he thinks you would need to be able to serve and meet guidelines to do so. But that's just where we're at with that. I, you know, I'm not sure how much I missed, but I, I do think that running it through West River is the, kind of the path of least resistance and the path of least risk to you, to your taxpayers and to your, the people in your town. I just think that if we can get in the universal breakfast program and then have all, you know, basically all the paperwork and the menus and whatnot all done through West River, that relieves you all of a lot of the high risk of running your own program.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything? My question is, how many kids, like, how do we do? So do we pay regardless of how many kids eat? Or do we just bring up lunches for everybody and then?
So the way the contract worked when West River was providing to Wardsborough School was that they paid for a certain amount of meals every day. So that, you know, and it was based on, you know, you don't have history. So that was based on some historical, you know, this many, 40% of the kids or 50, 60% of the kids eat or get the food from the school lunch program. So we don't have that historical knowledge, right? So I think it's, you know, we have to work that out with Jake to see what is the cost? Where's that break even point of doing this? Now, for them to do an extra, you know, 10 meals a day, I'm not sure that that's, that would require another person down there. So, you know, that would probably be, it could probably be done pretty cost effectively, so. And then how it typically works is, you know, the, usually, I keep saying we have an assistant, but it could be anybody in the school, calls in the meals in the morning, what the kids want, right? They get to pick between, I gave you a menu there.
How does that process work?
Well, again, I'd wanna talk to Jake about this, but they would, the kids would look at the menu and pick which one they wanted.
Like here at school, in the classroom in the morning?
Yes. And then the, it would be called in to Leland and Gray, and, because they're making both meals down there.
And they leave it up to the kids to decide, not their parents?
Yeah, I think that's typically how it would work. It did work that way in Wardsborough.
Okay.
So I don't know if you have anything to jump in on there, Greg?
Yeah, no, that's how it's working in all the elementary schools, is each morning. We actually created a spreadsheet for Newbrook to help with some, to just streamline and keep it the same. And we'll probably do the same for you. So you basically have your two classes. We put all the kids on there. We'll be able to put their schools, their Power School ID on there, so it's just easier for tracking on our end. And then you could do lunch and breakfast, and then the day's date. And so then the kids would say what they want, whether it's salad, yogurt, fruit and yogurt, sandwich, or hot. And then they could even choose what they wanted the next morning for breakfast as well. And so then we would prep all that, ship it up there. And then in the morning, you know, you'd have a warmer or whatever to warm up breakfast. And then we would be up with, or somebody would be up with lunch, you know, mid-late morning the next day.
Okay. It seems to me like that's putting a lot on the staff to go through and ask each kid to circle what they want for lunch or breakfast. It seems to me like the menu, if it's prepared monthly, goes home to the parents. The parent circle, working with their kids, what they want. And then the menu, whatever child it is, gets tossed to whoever's having to do this. Because I just, I don't, I don't see that as sustainable to have, you know, every, you know, our administrative assistant, whoever it is, going up to each child to ask them what they want when they're in kindergarten through, you know, sixth grade. Does that, is that doable? Parents get a monthly menu, and parents circle and send it in, and then they go from that? I mean, do you really, do you wanna be asking every student?
Sorry, that was, Bill called me about something. I missed that part.
Is he not at the meeting?
He is, he just had to transfer the meeting to me because he's got another meeting he's gotta go to.
So what they're saying is every day, somebody has to ask the kids what they want. And I'm suggesting a monthly menu, you have it right here, May 2022, goes home in April. And, you know, you just get it ready so that then you're handing it to somebody to just?
I, to me, that makes a lot of sense in terms of the parents, you know, having input with their parents.
Right, exactly.
As far as what they're eating, what they're not eating, what makes sense. And yeah, choosing it for the whole month, if you can, that'd be great.
Yeah, the menus run on a six, a six-week cycle.
Okay.
So it's not like the, you know, May might look the same as, you know, the previous two months.
I just feel like it'd be nice to be a little bit more prepared.
Yeah, I don't see that as a problem.
Sorry, Crystal, do you wanna say something?
Um, Beth?
Yeah.
I was, when Jackson and Oliver were at Townsend, they used to send a week's worth of what the lunch was. So on Friday, we would send that sheet in, and that sheet would go for the following week.
Okay.
So I don't know if that's something we can do. Because I'd sit down with the boys on, you know, Thursday night. They'd pick out what they wanted for the week. It got sent in on Friday, and then you guys knew, well, Townsend knew what they wanted for the next week.
No, I think that's brilliant. That makes, that's great. That makes a lot of sense. I don't feel comfortable asking kindergarten to pick out what they want without asking their, without going over it with their parents. I just think it should be a, you know, it should be a group effort. I don't, I don't think there's a problem with that.
I don't think that's an issue.
Do you have anything to say about this?
Nope, I don't think it's ideal, but we don't really have much of a choice. You know, when they put something out the day before June.
I gotta be honest, Lori, and I know this isn't you. And Bill, I hope you're, you know, listening. And I wish Carolyn were here right now. But I feel like this is, and I've said it before, I think it's incredibly unfair to put this on us right now, you know, July 5th, when we've done our budget for the year. Ask us to prepare for next, you know, for November budget preparation time? But to me, this is serious BS. It really, I just, I think it's one more way that people are trying to undermine small schools. And I just, I really, I have a really hard time with it. So, and I appreciate, you know, Rosie and Jamie's, whatever, time spent with you on June 17th when we were out of freaking school.
Here's a question to lighten the moment. We don't do it.
Yeah, right, what happens, oh, they'll, they'll shut us down.
I mean, I know you're telling us we gotta do it, right? And then we say, yeah, we're gonna do it, or whatever, and it doesn't happen. What happens at that point?
It is a law, so I, you know, I did not ask that question. I don't think they could, I don't think they could have given me an answer because I don't think they, you know, that Wyndham is in the minority of not serving food, right? So most schools serve, or have a program, so.
And we've been supported by the state in doing that, in opting out of it, which is fine, that's my point. We've been fine, and now all of a sudden, it's not fine without any, any sense of preparation or going to our taxpayers and saying, this is what we're looking at for next year. So Dan French?
Can Russell make a comment?
Yeah, when I'm done. So Dan French, he just, he's just threw this out there.
Well, it was the legislature voted on the bill. So it's the lawmakers that, that, and it has been floating around there, but it has been changed several times and, you know, nobody was quite sure if it would actually pass.
I just think that the board, the schools, the families, the community members should have been given the time to properly put this in place without being strong-armed, quite frankly, into doing it. So, yes, Russ, go ahead.
I think we're missing the point, and?
No, Russ, let me stop you there, Russ. We're not missing the point. Everybody has their opinion. If you have something to say, please just say what you have to say.
I'm about to, Beth, if you'd listen to what I'm gonna say.
I would, I just don't want you to, you're suggesting that people aren't, if we're missing the point, then therefore we're not, you know, as enlaided as you are. So just rephrase your, just say what you wanna say.
Again, you're missing the point. The board has a surplus in its budgets from several years past. I had sent an email to Lori asking her to tell me approximately what the surplus is. Sam's the repair of the boiler in the school. In my initial estimate is there's probably between $45,000 and $55,000 worth of surplus that can be allocated toward the cost of either equipment or other things to get the kitchen ready to receive the meals. Irregardless of what the kids wanna eat, we need to have certain equipment in the kitchen prepared and ready to serve the meals by the beginning of the school year. And we have surplus funds to pay for it. It's just a matter of making decisions to move forward in that direction. What the kids are gonna eat and how they're gonna eat it is a decision for the future. It doesn't need to be made tonight. I've always voted against delaying meal program for the school. And I think it's an important part of an education. And I think that it's important that we recognize that there are funds available to buy the equipment, hire the contractors to do the plumbing and the electrical work, to get the equipment put in place, and to make a contract for providing the meals. A lot of it's gonna be reimbursed by the state. So it isn't gonna cost many of the families very much money. And I think it's a matter of deciding, are we gonna opt out of the program and put Beth up for being arrested and put in jail? Or are we gonna have a food program so that the kids can eat? It's that simple.
Great, thank you, Russ. That was, yeah.
Lori.
Go ahead.
So Russ is right. I did get to that about 10 minutes before I left, Russ, and I hadn't had a chance to email you. But you are right in the ballpark, I would say, closer to $55,000 surplus that can be used for this program.
Go ahead, Bridget.
So you're recommending purchasing from an existing program. Can we talk about what the logistics of that are? Just from both a parent and an employee, what that's actually gonna mean would be helpful.
So, the way I see it is that probably it would fall to, not the teachers to implement any of it. It would probably fall to the position that you. I would say that if you're willing, it would be, you know, just as we talked about, there would be, the menus would go home. They would decide what foods. That you would make sure the menus got home and were received back. And then would go to the West River, Leland and Gray kitchen. At that point, you know, mid-morning, you would drive down and pick up lunches and the breakfast for the next day. And then you would probably be in charge of serving the lunch and, you know, then breakfast the next day. And then I think probably your return trip would be the bringing back the dishes. And, you know, you could use, they could use a lot of recyclable materials, you know, so that there didn't need to be a lot of washing going on here. Because that is one of the problems, is your sink. It's not a commercial-grade sink, so washing the trays could be a problem. But there are reusable, biodegradable trays and things like that that could be used. That would add a little cost, obviously, to the meal. But if Wyndham didn't wanna put in a new sink, then that could happen. So that's the way I see it. That's why I was saying, you know, we, that Wyndham Central could, you know, take some of the other duties that the administrative assistant did in the past and take those on as well. Probably would need more time, though, another hour a day or so to, you know, get every, all of the whole scope of the work done.
So here's a question that I have. If she is able to go get the meals and decides that that's something that's gonna work, as of now, she's leaving at 12 o'clock, so she can't serve the meals. Can we then serve the meals?
Yes, you may have to do some training, but yes.
What about a vehicle to do the meals? Is she just expected to use her vehicle if she's the one?
Well, you could, and we, you know, Wyndham would reimburse your mileage for that.
So I think that from that perspective, a couple of red flags, I don't love that. I've worked travel-based jobs before, and I think it's a lot of wear and tear and just not what I had agreed to. So that would be to the board, that would be my big red flag is.
Yeah.
So there'd be that. I think the, the work that has to be done is totally fine. I don't have a problem dealing with food service. I have a long history in that, so whatever training. Also, the other piece of it is the agreement Mickey and I had was leaving at 12, and this year I have to do that. Whereas next year, if you guys wanna pay full-time hours, I'm, both my kids are here, and I can do full-time hours. I just, that, I think there's some restrictions on what I actually can do. So those would be the two red flags that I think that I agree. I think that's probably the smartest, like, as a parent, I agree, I think that's the smartest way to go because it's cost-effective. like as a parent, I agree, I think that's the smartest way to go because it's cost-effective and if the following year we don't get free meals and enrollment drops, it, it's, we're not continuing to spend that money. And again, all the extra paperwork and all that, that does not bother me or scare me at all. It's just, I have a hard stop that I have another child that I have to pick up, um, and leave at twelve, and I, I don't think that I should have to drive my vehicle back and forth. So that would be my, my only qualms about that.
Yeah, that's really fair. Um, so you're saying the meals need to come up on individual trays? They can't, if, they can't just come up on, in a, you know, serving?
Uh, honestly Beth, I'm not sure how they're delivered. I mean, that's, that would be.
Probably they have to be on individual trays and that they have to portion out the portions perfectly right and like each spot.
Greg, Greg could probably answer that.
And real, and, real quick, could I just, um, all right, hold on, if, uh, it's, if no option of the bus driver who's down at Leland and Gray every morning picking up this, that's my only other thought, Greg.
Food, food wouldn't be done at that point. Um, and then you have the issue of trying to keep that food warm for four or five hours. Um, the, 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 the success that Wardsworth was found in this is, is really in, they load it into a car and over at eleven fifteen or so, they drive it over and she pulls it right out and they usually prepackage everything as much as they can just to save from the serving, um, on site. Uh, and so I, I think that's a model that we would look to, you know, um, for your place. I, I think it would make the most sense. Um, as far as the food being where it needs to be, how it needs to be there, right, um, so, you know, portion control and whatnot. Um, I think it would depend on the meal. I mean, if it would depend on the, right, if that person wanted to go back and do those dishes, you could totally set it up to portion it out or, um, cause the way it works is if you're gonna do the dishes there, you need a three-bay sink. You need to wash and sanitize. Um, need, you know, um, the last time I was there, I was discussing with some people, I think you could get away with your freezer and your refrigerator and put temp meters in them and somebody could just, when they got there every day, they could write down the temperature of those, so you could have your temperature logs. Um, I think you could do it with adding a two-twenty in somewhere for just a, a nice warmer, um, to heat things up in the morning and whatnot in order to serve breakfast. Uh, so, I mean, I, I think that's it. I think really the hardest thing at this point I see would be the logistics of figuring out how we get, you know, how we get the transport of the meals done. Um, there's a lot of different ways we can do it. We still have the, um, a lot of those little packages with the, with the plastic lids on the top that they like seat, heat seal to it. Um, that are a little portioned out that they were doing with a lot of the COVID meals. We still have a, a pretty good number of those, so you know, that, that would definitely be an option. Um, I, I think that there's, you know, like I said, I don't know, but to me, the hard part is just making sure the temp is there, um, and the ability to read the temp. And, and, you know, it, it would really break down to how you wanted to do it Mickey and, and where, where you all were most comfortable.
She got Abby and Sarah.
Uh, so I don't know who was first, Abby or Sarah?
I don't know.
Sorry, Abby or Sarah? You could decide. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thanks Abby. Uh, first off, it's really, oh, my camera's off. Hold on. It's really nice to see everybody. I've missed you.
Hi.
Um, and Beth, if you ever went to jail, I would help bail you out, so don't worry. Um, question was maybe I missed it. Um, I heard, I did hear you say that Bridget would be the one transporting. I heard her say that she's not into it. Does, is it only allowed like one person? Does one certified person have to transport the food or can like parent volunteers transport the food? Um, and also Mickey, you half joking, half serious said, what if you don't just, just don't do the school program this year? Because I'm hearing a lot of like frustration about the timeline of this. Like realistically though, what happens if everybody bombards Secretary French and be like, hey dude, it doesn't work this year because of the budgets, but we would really wanna implement it next year? How do we go forward with that? Like what would that, what would that look like? Because I know your budget is not the only budget that was completed when it is. It's gotta be a statewide thing. Are there not other schools that are also struggling now trying to figure this out in two months? Like it doesn't, it just doesn't seem, I mean, maybe logistically okay, but at the same time, like what's the, what's the stress level? And of course it's a new program, so there's gonna be kinks to iron out. So why not let other schools figure out those kinks and then us start next year with open arms?
Anybody?
Any, anyone?
We might be the only school that doesn't have a food program. When I talked to Hunger Free Vermont, um, so, um, as Lori said, we're in the minority. I, I, we might be the only ones. Um, there is a school, it's not great, it's not an answer I wanna share, give, but I, I, from what I've heard, um, I don't know if anyone is in this position but us. There was one other school north, but I think that they, I can't remember who it was. I think they already sorted it out, so unfortunately that doesn't, there's not a lot.
How does that work legally? They're passing something that affects one school. That seems weird to me.
And it's not like we've opted out because we don't wanna feed our children. In the past, the majority of the parents didn't want the food coming from the state. They wanted to feed their kids what they wanted to feed them and, uh, you know, obviously, so, I mean, I thought Bridget's idea of the EBT card, but obviously that's not gonna happen. So this isn't a matter of Wyndham not wanting to feed their children. We just, it, it just wants some time. I'm just curious as to how many kids are gonna, after the first week are gonna, and maybe they will, maybe they'll be into it. I don't know. I just hate to think of all this food that there's the potential of it being wasted unless, can they take it home?
I don't know.
So.
Oh, sorry Abby, did you wanna? Yep.
Thank you. Kinda touching on what I was gonna bring up. Um, so I echo, I guess what Sarah has just said with, you know, hearing the frustration, um, uh, you know, amongst people regarding this, but at the same time, I'm fairly certain that this is, this has been a conversation and a topic for quite some time about how to implement the option. Um, this is just one of the many challenges faced by a tiny rural school. And it's not gonna be the last, um, but it's, that's where we are actually really great as a community with collaborating and outside-the-box thinking. Um, so yes, it's frustrating trying to figure out budget stuff, um, but I think if we can all just put on some, you know, positive hats here and think about how this could potentially be a really awesome option, um, and something to be a part of, and there's, there's probably lots, lots of benefits to at least getting kind of set up. There's gonna be kinks, there's gonna be things we're gonna have to work out, but in the long run, there will always be the option of people who don't wanna participate, but for those that do, like, I'm stoked to not have to think about making lunch. Um, so, yeah, I just, I just wanted to kinda share that for everyone to really think, um, think about how we could make this a really great thing. And if food, um, is then being provided, I do think that they are allowed to be able to take it home. Um, so even if one child isn't eating it, it's not like the food would have to go to waste. Um, but that would definitely be a great question to get confirmation on, um, because if food is getting, we are creating an extreme waste, then clearly that's a problem. Um, but if it's free food with the price of, you know, food going up, I can tell you right now, mine, I got two kiddos that don't eat, I will happily probably eat their food. So, um, food going to families is not necessarily a bad thing. Um, so just to, to throw that out there, um, as everyone continues thinking about this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sarah, I'm sorry. I don't know, I, were you done before? I know you didn't really get an answer.
I haven't heard a response yet about if parent volunteers can pick up the food or not.
Yes, they can.
Have to be all on one person or can other people pick them up?
Sorry, yes. Lori gave you a thumbs up. Yes.
Now, the, the transportation is not something that is part of the training process. It's really about the serving of the food, the temperatures of the, uh, as Greg mentioned, um, that type of thing, the meal counting. All of that requires certifications, um, which the state of Vermont does all the training for that. Um, but as far as picking up the food, yes, that could be done on a volunteer basis.
Okay, so that, that would ease the pressure up slightly. Okay?
Only thing I would say Sarah, was if you guys were gonna try and take it on as volunteers, maybe through your, your, your new parent volunteer group, would be, we would need to maybe ahead of time say, if no one signs up, then who does it fall on? We would just need to have that, you know, you'd wanna have that clarified of like, okay, you know, ideally for the most part we do, but say there's two or three days a month, we have no one, well, who does it fall on? The, the kind of the, the failsafe person, but.
Awesome. Well, good. Thanks. And if I have anything else, I'll just chime in.
What?
Beth?
Yes, Russ?
I think that the cost is something that is, needs to be addressed and there's not gonna be any cost and there's not gonna be any increase in our budget for this next year because we have a surplus. So using the argument that it's gonna cost money and raise our taxes is not there. We already have, as Lori indicated, about fifty-five thousand dollars worth of surplus, which is more than enough to cover the necessary equipment that would be necessary to have in the kitchen, the refrigerator, the warming trays, the sink and all the other items to be able to have the meal program in place. So it's not gonna increase the cost to taxpayers at all. In fact, even after we make the improvements, there's still gonna be a surplus.
Thanks Russ. I, um, my issue is it, to me, it seems, you know, regardless, uh, you know, maybe you like to be told what to do and you just jump on that. I, I kinda feel like we could, could have been given a little bit of a heads up to properly prepare for this because we're really not sure who's gonna wanna be doing this or not. We don't know who's gonna be picking up the food, so these are all questions that need to be asked. So unless you're signing up as a driver, that's fantastic, but there's just all these other little things we have to figure out and it's July 5th. That's my, that's my problem. I feel like we, uh, Russ, I'm not done yet. I feel like we could have had a little bit more time. I get what you're saying. There's a surplus. You sound like you're all for it. That's fantastic. I'm really happy that people, you know, Abby totally into this. That's great. But we've already heard right now, the person that, you know, was gonna be, unfortunately, was gonna be the person who had to deal with this can't do it. So, and fair enough to her. I completely agree. You know, that was not what she signed up for. So I'm just trying to make sure that we're really going into this clearly, knowing that, and I'm well aware, I'll probably be one of the drivers. So, anyway, and that's fine. I'm happy to do that for you.
The universal food program had been talked about since January of last year, of this past year.
Yep.
That had been discussed for a long time in the legislature, so it shouldn't have surprised anybody.
Really? I find that really hard to believe that after we developed our budget for this year, now all of a sudden we have to come up with something in July. I'm sorry, Russ, I disagree with you there. Lori has something to say.
I, well, I agree that the universal meals has been talked about. I think what was, um, something that is new that I didn't hear about until obviously very recently is, is that there's going, there was no exemption status any longer. And that is, that is the, the piece that, um, has taken all of us by surprise. Uh, whether it was buried in there or not, um, I don't know, but, uh, it certainly, nobody reached out and said, hey, this affects your one school in the state that, you know, there was nobody reaching out to me to tell me that. So that's the piece that has taken everybody by surprise, but you are correct. This has been, the universal meals has been, uh, talked about.
All right, um, anybody else? Cause it sounds like we just have to do this.
Crystal and Michael have been waiting for a while. Their hands up.
Go ahead, Cr- I can't see a bloody thing. I can't see hands. I can't see anything. All right, Crystal.
I can chime in and help you out Beth, if you'd like.
Uh, that's right. Thank you. Go ahead, Crystal.
So I just wanted to say that I think it's foolish to consider not doing this. Um, it wasn't something that was passed by the Board of Education. It was something that was passed in the legislature. So it's law. Um, you know, Jackson and Oliver, when they went down to Townsend took full advantage of the meal program, um, and the saving the lunches, so what the kids don't eat. I, at Townsend, it was not allowed to be wrapped up and taken home, so I don't believe that is an option. Um, and as far as the transportation goes, um, I'm just gonna say this, Bridget, you can chime in, Mickey, you can chime in. Um, the pizza pickup was pretty much just a couple of parents doing it. So I don't think you should go for the parent volunteer option. I think you need to think about hiring somebody to do the pickups. Because if you get into a situation where that parent volunteer doesn't do it and you have no backup, it's gonna be a problem.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Crystal. Michael Pelton.
Uh, I'm sorry, I missed the first beginning of the, part of the meeting, so I got, I started with the, talking about, I guess, option two. Um, so I guess I don't know what the first option was, but, um, I guess my thoughts are, uh, it kinda puts a school in a conundrum, uh, and I think it's important for us to recognize that. Um, at this point, it seems like we need to make sure that we try to find the most cost-effective and efficient manner to move forward. And then I really, I know that there's a lot of talk and a lot of thought about the school doing their own program. I think that it's something that could be done with a reasonable amount of planning. And my preference would be that we think about that for next year.
Yeah.
Assuming that we go for the, get the meals from the high school. I don't see that as a good viable long-term option. I think it's much better to get it from closer to home. That's my two cents.
Great, thank you. No, I, I told, that's my point and, and believe me, Crystal, I'm not looking to, you know, obviously it's the law. I just like to remind people that we are the people, so I don't like being told what to do halfway through the year without any real, you know, heads up. So no, Michael, I agree. I think if we can, you know, eventually work towards something in-house, that would be fantastic. So what do we need to do from here? Unless anybody else has anything to say. Go ahead, Bridget.
Um, so I would say that for the first part, it's a law, we have to do it. We're kinda stuck with this. Um, to Sarah's point, can we all write letters? I think at some point the town of Wyndham has to say we pay a lot out to the state in taxes and the state has a surplus and that's why they're doing this food program this year and we paid into that a lot, but we also are getting the help to kick this program off. And I just think that that's out of our control and that might be the thing that we all write letters about. So to go back to Sarah's point, that I think there's value in we have to do this, we have to move forward with it, but as a community, there is room for, for speaking up and saying, hey, we paid all that money and that wasn't fair. What can we, what can we get from that? So maybe we go back and get something later. So that's thought number one. Thought number two, Crystal is a hundred percent right, um, and Greg kinda made the point too. I think parent volunteers is a really risky, uh, way, way to do that. I did a lot of the pizza pickup and, um, had some scheduled things towards the end of the year and put it out to all the parents and I would get Crystal and Cricket elsewhere. So Crystal did bail me out on a couple of Fridays and if she hadn't, I don't know how we would have gotten pizza to the kids. So it would have been Mr. B Day. So I think that, um, while like my schedule, my agreed schedule this year and the personal car transportation are the red flags for me, for specifically this school year.
Totally.
Um, I, I would be very cautious of a parent volunteer program and that is what I have to say.
Yeah, and people, parents are busy. I totally get that. Um, I'm gonna go back, I see there's Crystal, Sarah, Michael. I'm gonna go back to Sarah and then Crystal, Michael. Does that seem fair?
I think Crystal, Michael might have both left their hands up.
Oh, okay. All right, that's okay. Um, Sarah, oh, and just speaking of that point about the town of Wyndham, there is a select board member on the meeting right now, so hopefully he heard that. So Michael, you've been tagged. Um, so Sarah.
Um, my question is, uh, actually for Russ directly. So Russ, I keep hearing you say that there's a surplus, there's a surplus. Why don't we get the kitchen going, blah, blah, blah. I'm wondering if you have actually priced out uh, what it would take to redo a kitchen in its entirety, including labor? Um, because usually kitchen things are not very cheap between the hood fan, the three-bay sink, the sepp deck, all of those things. So I was wondering if you personally have, um, figured out the financial of that to see if we would actually have still a surplus after all of the improvements were made? surplus after all of the improvements were made.
Yes, I can answer that question because I'm looking at a list of prices and things that Greg put together last year. And his estimate is $12,295 for a lot of the items that need to be done, including labor and equipment and everything else to upgrade the kitchen. I'm also looking at the backside of that sheet that had an estimated cost of $25,903 for the meals, but that has been negated because it's going to be reimbursed by the state. So we're looking at probably 15 to $17,000 worth of expenditure to get the equipment and to get the contractors to do the installation, the electric and plumbing to put things together. Um, the un, the unknown item is the transportation from the school cafeteria down the West River up to the school here in Wyndham. But I know.
That's not what I'm asking. That's not relevant to this conversation.
Well, that's, that's, that's the only thing that I don't know what the cost would be. But I know that Greg isn't, in, in some situations, when there hasn't been someone to deliver food to Jamaica, he's hopped in his car and brought the food down there. So I know there are solutions. And I know it's, it's far less than the $55,000 worth of surplus that is available in the budget and there would be no increase in the tax rate this year and even next year for this program.
And what about the timeline, considering most contractors I know are scheduled out until the fall and also like the supply chain issues?
That, that's an issue that I don't know how to address, but Greg has got relationships with individuals who have helped renovate kitchens and schools in the West River District. And I'm sure he has a line on people who would be able to help us.
Great. Thanks.
So how does that transpire if Lori, we can't get the work done and so we can't get stuff settled and we can't implement the program on day one?
So in the first part of the letter that I wrote to you guys, um, the kitchen that you have right now does not actually, um, negate you from doing the, uh, this child nutrition program.
Okay.
Okay. So you could do it. I think that the, the sink is the biggest hurdle at this point and maybe a warming. Um, you know, the two things that Greg was talking about. So, um, we probably need to get a health inspector in, but Rosie's exact words to me were that it could not pass the health inspection, but still be used for the child nutrition program.
That's great to hear.
So.
Awesome. I love that.
But I think that you have to take that with, you know, in the context that it was being talked about as part of running the program. So, so I don't think that it's a, a huge lift. Um, but I will leave that up to our Director of Operations, uh, to be able to do the sink and the warming, um, drawer, whatever.
Again, I don't see these things being.
Question for Greg?
Yeah, I got you.
Um, now, when there was, were you, did you get any pricing by any chance on sinks or a warmer with, um, different renovations going on around that we could get possibly discounted price?
No. No, you don't need a sink. Cause you're not going to do dishes there. So you don't need a three-bay sink. You're going to need, you're going to need thermostats. We're going to tra- that's going to be part of the transport. We'll transport in a way that, you know, even if we have to have enough stuff, right? Where like we have enough to bring you trays and stuff for one day and then the next day pick those up and drop new ones off, right? I mean, what are we talking about? 30? 30 trays?
Right.
I would guess we have 250 of them at Leland and Gray. Um, so we had to buy more. That's no big deal. Now, I don't know if you all know me or not, but if you give me the okay to spend the money, I'm going to tell you right now that that kitchen's going to be ready to use when school starts.
Okay.
I'm just throwing it out there. I do know people, we will make it happen. Um, and, you know, we, we may pay a little more because we've got to pull in some favors, you know what I mean? Right? To like, to, to have people work on the weekend or, or a night or whatever. But I, at this point, July 5th, so I don't know if I would make this same statement on August 5th, but right now, if we said, yes, let's go for it, figure out how to get enough power there, get 220 there, get thermostat, you know, get some thermostats for the refrigerator and the freezer. And we could even look at maybe something newer and with a little more space. But, you know, with the number of kids you have, you can keep milk in that refrigerator as long as you have a thermostat. You can keep some leftovers in that freezer as long as you have a thermostat. Um, so I, I mean, yeah, I mean, as far as really making it happen, the hardest thing at this point is figuring out that logistical piece. But the rest of it, I, I do believe we could, we could absolutely make happen.
Okay. Um, I just have a quick, because we mentioned, um, there's been somebody that's offered to donate towards this program. Is that something that you're working on? Or?
No, I haven't had any contact with that person.
Who would be the person?
Russ would like to make a motion.
Yep. Uh, just, I just want to finish this last. I just, who would that person talk to? I guess is my, so we've had somebody in the community who's offered to, um, help move this program along. And I'm wondering who would be the person to talk to about that?
They can talk to me.
Yeah, I think Greg.
Well, I.
Okay.
So Michael has his hand raised.
Lori, yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to, just, cause, so talk to you or talk to Greg?
Um, probably both, but it may need to be something that goes through your 501(c)(3) operation that you have attached to the school.
Okay, great. Thank you.
For taking in a donation.
I don't know who is first, Russell or Michael?
I'd like to make a motion that the school board authorize Greg and Lori to spend up to, but not exceeding $15,000 for equipment and labor to enable the kitchen there to be able to be qualified to serve meals based under the school nutrition program, beginning in whatever, the 1st of September, 2022.
Can I get a second on that?
I would like to discuss this a little bit further before.
We, we need, we need to get a second before we can discuss it. Yep, thanks, Russ. We need a second first, Abby, and then we can discuss it.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
Oh, boy.
The motion is to authorize Greg and Lori to spend up to $15,000 worth of the surplus from the school budgets, past, um, budgets, to get the kitchen materials and labor installed to qualify it to satisfy the school nutrition program for September 1st, 2022.
To clarify, would that just be the bare minimum that Greg was mentioning, like the thermometer pump or, or is that like the fancy upgrades that Russ wants? Like?
I'm sorry. Just, Sarah, I'm sorry. When, when a motion's made, we have to get a second on it first. We're not, we're not approving it. We just need a second and then we can discuss it. So that's the motion that's been made. Do I have a second?
I'd like to make a motion to amend. No.
No, first you have to, first we have to just, first we just have to second this.
They have to approve it.
We have to second it and then discuss it and then we can go from there.
What if nobody wants to second it?
All right, I'm going to second it. We're going to have a discussion. That's what we're doing. And if, if somebody wants to amend it, then that's a whole nother process. Okay? So, so I've seconded it. You got that, Peter? Okay, discussion now. I'm sorry, Sarah, I think you, you were first and then Abby, you can go from there. Go ahead, Sarah.
Um, just, I was just wondering, like Greg said that you guys didn't need all the fancy upgrades. There's like a bare minimum to make it work. So that was my question was if, was Russ suggesting the bare minimum be done or like the fancy upgrade done? That, I just wanted some clarification with that.
So I don't know, Greg or Lori, if you can speak to that?
Yeah, I, I take it as, as he's looking for us to get it up and running. So it's, it's something to run. So initially in the fall, we did a proposal that was if you wanted a kitchen type space, right? You would need a hood, you needed three, this is, you want to run your own program. But by buying into West River and taking the chance with that, you can, um, you don't have to necessarily do all that. We can provide all that down at West River. So now that takes all that off the table now. Um, and this is what your group did when they, when your food group in the fall said, hey, we want to check out other kitchens. And actually, I think it might have even been, um, Sarah or Bridgette, when they went and they talked with the Hunger Free Vermont and they said, yes, this is what they do at Green Street School in Rattler. I said, oh, that's right. Green Street literally has a warmer in the hallway and they would bring the food down with trays. They would tray it all up. They would bring it to the classrooms and then they would take it back. And I said, Al, actually, you could totally do that up there. It's a little different because of the travel, right? The, the travel definitely makes a difference. And so that's why I think you, you need a warmer. You need to be able to bring the food back up to temp. Um, but we can serve family style and, and, you know, we could, we could do that if that's what you guys want to do and, and you think is going to be the best shot at making it successful. I think that we would want to do that, right? I mean, we want to see this be successful because it being successful means kids eat. So I think it's the bare minimum to get it up and running because to do a fa- you don't really have, I mean, let's be honest, you don't have the space to do a fancy kitchen there without losing half of your already fairly undersized multipurpose room.
So you're saying, uh, Russ's amount, 15 grand, you're saying that's a, that's a decent amount?
More than enough.
More than enough?
Yep.
Okay. Um, up to 15 grand. I'm sorry, Abby, you wanted, did you want to say something?
Yes. Um, and I guess this is also a, a good, great question. But for the work that's going to be done, um, is there a way that we could support local business that's, we have people in our community that have various businesses and if, I don't know if we would consider utilizing them, um, and maybe just to have some discussion on what that looks like. But, um, keeping things local is, that is always good.
I can tell you the electrician's going to be about, he lives about a half a mile from your school.
Okay.
Well, there you go. Perfect.
If you know a plumber though, you let me know. I'm in. I, I don't, you know, I'm not thinking about who does the work. Uh, but, and I don't know how much plumbing really needs to happen. The biggest key is get, is making sure your panel has enough power in it to bring another 220 over there for, for a warmer. Um.
Okay.
But you would not be the first school to run on a homeowner, on a residential refrigerator in a residential range. It's not ideal, but given the fact that you're not cooking on it, you're just warming, you know, it's, it's way more doable.
Okay. Uh, any other questions regarding the motion made by Russ? Okay, are you?
Yeah. I mean, like the, the one thing we got to figure out is how we're going to move the food. If we go and do all this and then we don't have somebody to move the meals, that defeats the purpose. So as long as we know we're going to get somebody, how would that work? Would you guys place an ad for somebody and hope that we get somebody who wants to do an hour and a half a day or something?
So that's something Greg and I'll discuss, but I would say that, um, we could put it out of, to hire, um, somebody who wanted to do that. Maybe there's a retired person in your community that wants a little extra money and they're going, willing to run down, um, every day and pick this up. So, um, for 175 days. So it's not all year.
Right.
Um, but Greg and I can discuss this. We can discuss it with Jake, um, and see where we land on that. And that can be a subsequent meeting that we can bring that information back to you. But we'll be working on the logistics of all of this from now until it's the first food is served.
Okay.
So it's doable.
All right. Any other discussion?
I have one question.
Yeah, sure, of course.
Um, I'm wondering if we have a sense of how much this is going to, uh, cost the school? I know that the state is theoretically funding the cost of food or at least a portion of it, but it looks like it's not going to cover all of that. Do we have a sense of how much this is going to be, um, in excess of our current budget?
So, should I jump in?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
So. It's 100% covered for the students that eat through the program. So for parents, it is a really good thing. It will cost Wyndham a little bit of money and it's mainly in the, um, the transportation costs and the, um, basically the serving costs. So it's really labor. Um, what that looks like at this point, I'm not exactly sure. Um, but it's, you know, for the food, that is 100% funded.
And we've got somebody who's offered to help offset the costs. So even maybe some of this other costs that would come onto the school may not.
Right. The equipment, we already talked about. I was looking at it from a standpoint of, um, you know, the ongoing costs.
Gotcha.
Okay.
So Crystal Corvieu has her hand up and then Sarah, you also have your hand up.
Sure. Go ahead, Crystal.
Hey, Beth, maybe you could ask Ellen to send an email out to the community. I mean, a lot of our retired people are always like, we want to do something to help and they couldn't go in because COVID. So you might get some people in the community who are retired.
That's brilliant. Thank you, Crystal. Um, so what I would do would be wait for what you put together and just put it out. Does that sound?
Sounds good.
I would just, I wouldn't want to just send something, but if it came from, just so they see that it's legit and, yeah. Dynamite, thank you, Crystal. Uh, Sarah?
Is this food program the, the same one that offers incentives, um, to, like, to work in collaboration with farms, local farms? Is this the same, is this that same program?
She may have the farm to school. Yeah. So there's, no, the child nutrition program is the child nutrition program. It's a federal, federal program. The Farm to School Program, um, and Food Connects, um, those are all organizations that work with schools, um, to link up the program with, um, the school. Uh, in this case, they'd be linking with West River. And I can tell you already, they have that relationship. Both Food Connects and Farm to School both have a relationship with West River.
Great. All right. Great question. Thank you, Sarah. Anybody else? I don't see any hands. Okay. Um, unless there's no other discussion, um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Okay. It sounds like it's unanimous. So there you go. There you go.
For clarity, um, the motion was really about getting the kitchen up and running for, for clarity, um, should there be a motion that says that we're, that you are going to, uh, do the option of getting the food from West River?
Yeah, this was just for that one. So, yeah, the kitchen. So.
Clear motions on the.
Yeah, this is just for the, the, Russ's motion for up to 15 grand to, to bring the kitchen up to speed. So next, we need a motion to, uh, opt into this program.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Nice second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Does it have to?
Aye.
Wow, you are. Sorry.
Does it have to be specified that it's a one-year opting in, in the motion?
I thought this, this was.
It's already one year. Okay, I'm just making sure it doesn't suck us any for good.
It's a pilot. Thank you, though.
It's a one-year contract and that's really all you would sign. You wouldn't sign a multi-year contract.
You can come in at the last minute. Okay, sorry. So.
No further discussion.
So, yes. Russ, Russ moved it. Abby seconded it. All those in favor say aye, aye.
Aye.
It's, Russ, that's an aye?
It's an aye, yes. I said it before.
Okay. Anything else?
Amen.
Wyndham now has a food program, which is actually a little bit exciting too. I mean, I understand it's stressful, but.
It is. I just wish that it could have, you know, we were talking about it. It's just, it's hard to just have it come down from the state when I think Bridgette made a great point. I think we do a lot for the state and I'd like to see the state do, you know, a lot for us also.
I still think we can fight it at some, fight something at some point for some sort of fairness of like.
Yeah, I would save, yeah.
Future, but I think that for today, this was successful.
Yeah, nice job.
All right. All right. Is that it?
Lori, can you just, um, be able to keep track on how much it, everything that we are spending, you know, towards this out of pocket that we could then write Mr. French and say, we had to spend X, Y, and Z last minute. Um, and maybe that would be a better thing to negotiate some funds getting returned or, you know, even excess funds getting brought to us. Is that possible?
Sure. Yep. I can do that. Um, I will say that to Russ's point, that you do have a surplus and he will say you have a surplus. But I can certainly, I'm always tracking everything. So it's, that's perfectly fine.
And that's great. And that was really great. That's a great addition, Abby. I, that's, that's a great idea. And I, um, and we do have a surplus and we have a surplus for emergencies and this didn't need to be an emergency like this. This could have.
I agree 100%.
Waited. So, but no, I think that's fantastic. And to have more information to just, to address the state, um, just to, you know, make our point. And to have more information to just, to address the state, um, just to, you know, make our point, I think is important. And to remember that we are the people, you know, we, we do our share. We do our part. So, anyway, anything else from anybody?
Thank you all so much for being here.
All right, so next meeting is August, unless Bill wants to throw another one in.
Bill's not here, so he can't.
Uh, next meeting, I'm sorry, is August 19th at 6 o'clock, and we will be discussing the financials. All right, thank you. Uh, we're journeying at, whatever time it is. I can't see.
7:12.
7:12, thank you.